Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Gramby November 6, 2024. Thank you all for joining us here. We have several people in the gallery and on Zoom as well. I know Board Member Ali Zafar is traveling this week, but he is joining us via Zoom. I'm going to keep my chairperson's report pretty brief because I think there's a lot of exciting and fun and winning and winning things going on at our school. So I'm going to make sure Sophia gets all the thunder there. I did want to say that I had the pleasure of attending though, I think several of us actually went to the Wells Road Book Fair this weekend and that was a really great event. We had a great time there and my kids had a good time roaming through the book fair and a little weekend romp on the playground as well. So many thanks to GEF and all the many sponsors for that particular event. I know Superintendent Burke will address that more in detail later. So I'm going to move along to public comment. Gramby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board, and Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member or to discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. As we usually do, we will start with public comment from those who are present in the room and then we will move on to Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please enter something into the queue so we know you do wish to speak during comment and don't miss that opportunity. Is there anyone present that would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? All right. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I will close public comment and move along to student representative reports. Katie O'Neil is at a volleyball game right now, I believe, and that is, she will do her best to join us later, but we have Sophia here to give us the full report. Sophia?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So the performance for Twisted Tales of Poe is quickly approaching and the performances for the play will be held Friday, November 15 through Sunday, November 17. Many seniors have been meeting with their guidance counselors to begin submitting applications for early action and decision colleges and the free application date for Connecticut schools was November 1st. PSATs were held October 23rd and we also welcomed many new members into NHES during our induction ceremony on October 23rd and that was held in the auditorium. The quarter closed, our first quarter closed on October 29th and DECA has been holding a Cannon-Bottle Drive, or will hold, sorry, Cannon-Bottle Drive on November 16th from 10 to 12 to fundraise money to hopefully send DECA to Nationals this year. Next week, we're going to have two early release days on November 13th and 14th due to parent-teacher conferences. As for sports, it's been a very exciting week as several of our sports teams begin their first rounds of states. Girls field hockey had a game on Monday, winning against New Fairfield 2 to 0. Boys football, JV, they had a game, or yeah, they had a game away versus Ellington on Monday. And girls soccer wrapped up their season on Monday with a close game against New Fairfield. Boys soccer had a game yesterday, home versus Valerie Regional, winning 4 to 3. Today, girls volleyball had a game or has a game against Weston away, their first round of states. Field hockey has a game tomorrow versus North Branford for their second round of states. And boys soccer has a game on Friday away versus Eats Hampton. Boys varsity football has a game Friday as well against Capital Prep home. And finally, boys JV football has a game in the morning also versus Capital Prep home.
Thank you. Yeah, all the teams are performing really well this season.
Yeah, it's a really good season.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Reports and discussion. Middle school, high school scheduling update. I believe we have Mr. David James.
Yes, thank you. So joining us via Zoom is Mr. David James. He's the Managing Director of the New Solutions K-12. This consultant firm has helped us to review our middle and high school schedule with an eye on providing additional opportunities for our students and looking for efficiency across the schedule. So I will turn it over to David to present the process that we engaged in and some of our findings.
Excellent. Well, hi, everyone. I would like to turn on my video. I'm getting a message that I cannot start my video because I was supposed to stop it. I'm not sure if you all can adjust that, just that setting.
Okay.
There we go. All right, we're good. Hi, everyone. My name is David James, Managing Director here at New Solutions K-12. Really excited to talk with you all today and apologies that I cannot be there in person. I am traveling today and unfortunately got a little caught up. So I'm at an airport right now, so it's a little loud or a little mumpy with the laptop on my lap. I apologize in advance. But Superintendent Burke, Assistant Superintendent Parsons and school board members, thank you for following me today and for the opportunity to share some of what we've been doing and what we've been learning as we've taken a close look at the middle school schedule and high school schedule in the district. Would it be best if I shared my desk or is that something that you all are able to talk upon the screen for me?
Tell please what?
We'll do that for you, David. We're looking at it now.
Awesome.
So we're viewing the first slide.
Gotcha. All right, we'll go about it that way then. Great, so yeah, first slide, New Solutions K-12, we're a Boston-based firm that works with schools, districts, and state education agencies nationally. I lead our scheduling and staffing practice and advise elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools of just about every combination of grade levels on how they can schedule a bit more strategically and use the schedule as really as a tool and as a lever to help drive the priorities and create better opportunities and outcomes for students and teachers. On the second slide of the presentation, you can see some of the goals that we had set up with the district at the beginning of this process. And the purpose of this is really to kind of do three things. One was to help identify, hear from a lot of folks to see what about the schedule and what about staffing already worked really well. There's always things in any district, any school that we work with that are components of the schedule and how kind of use that should be protected going forward and are really valued by students and teachers and staff. So part of our work was to see what were some of those accommodations and things to continue. And sometimes that's more on the process side, other times it's more on the schedule itself. The second goal was around understanding where there are areas of need and/or opportunities for improvement going forward. And this can come in a lot of different forms. Sometimes it's more on the blocks of time on the schedule. Other times it's more on the courses and the course offerings. And other times it's more on the staffing and how staffing are utilized. So we looked at all three of those components. We imagined the schedule as a pie of courses, staffing, blocks of time. That's how we thought about it. And then our ultimate goal is to make sure that there's a clear set of priorities going forward in the district at middle school and high school level around how time should be organized and how the schedule should be set up going forward, especially with the prospect of potentially aligning the schedules going forward, which we'll talk more about in just a moment. On the next slide, this gives you a sense of timeline and a lot of the activities that were involved in this work. Very much to, I'd say, Superintendent Burke's credit and the choices that the leadership team made, it's a very inclusive process in terms of the member and the variety of folks that we spoke to, spoke with students at both grade levels, bright teachers, staff, school leadership, the district leadership, in a way that was meant to collect a lot of different perspectives and opinions on the schedule with the understanding that the schedule really did face the day-in and day-out experience of a lot of folks and the amount of time. And so we know that schedules can be a pretty personal thing for folks at the end of the day and wanted to make sure we had plenty of opportunity for folks to share their thoughts and feelings on that. In addition to call up the qualitative side of scheduling, we wanted to make sure we had a really clear understanding of the quantitative side of things as well. So we did a line-by-line review of course offerings at both schools, section by section, who's teaching what, what are teaching loads, are folks at their teaching capacity, what are enrollments, what do enrollments look like across different departments and different grade levels or intervention courses. And so we very much wanted to get both kind of a soft feel for the schedule as well as a hard feel of actually how it works and where they might be starting going forward. So three phases, as you see on this slide. First was really to build our understanding and start to engage folks around this work. Over the course of this fall, that's when we got much deeper into data analysis, hosting a series of focus groups with folks, came out and visited both of the schools. And then here we are towards the back half of it where this coming Monday we'll be sharing the full set of findings and hosting a conversation with a group called the Guiding Coalition, which is a mix of middle school and high school staff to get their thoughts on what should be prioritized going forward. So on the next slide, just to get a little set and put out there what we were seeing at the middle school level. This was just a visual we put together so we could clearly understand and others could as well how the middle school schedule works. And as you can see here, it's effectively an eight-period schedule. Students are taking four core classes, three non-core classes, and there's a lunch and academic enrichment period built into it as well. See, there's an A/B rotation, which is something that we'll kind of be seeing at the secondary level where students will take all their core classes every day, some non-core classes like world language at certain grade levels every day as well, and some of their non-core classes are happening every other day. And I think that's either way to add some variety to the student experience and expose them to more subjects and courses than they would be able to otherwise, it's kind of more static schedule. On the next slide, we got a sense of the high school schedule. And here you can see different bell schedules. We understand it's the same start time and end time, but that time is cut up a little bit differently. Still an eight-period day, but in this case, periods are a little bit shorter and then there's the use on Wednesday and Thursday of those block schedules. So you could call this a hybrid schedule where you get the eight-period day as well as a four-block period day. I think that's a really good way to get a mix of blocks of time for students, which can be really beneficial, especially if certain classes or departments we often hear are enormously helpful, science labs, sometimes for English classes to have longer expressions. And so you get kind of the best of both worlds in that setup. Does make it a little bit harder to follow the schedule and you gotta sit down and sometimes look at your planner to see, all right, what day is it and what classes am I taking? But I think overall gives a lot of variety to students as well. And so as a general statement, both schedules that we saw in the district are common models that we've seen that we've seen work well. I think the trick for the district going forward will be how might we schedule it better aligned such that you can expand, maintain opportunities for students, and potentially a bit more cost-effectively use some of the staff or share them between buildings. On the next slide, we lay out a couple of the accommodations and some of the things that we saw and heard from folks that we wanted to highlight is some things that we thought were going well. On the process side of things, the district has a district-based scheduler, so someone at the district level who is, part of their role is to help the schools build their schedule on a power scheduler. That's not something that we see that commonly, and I think is actually one of the best things that the district can do to help out schools and take some of the lift of creating schedules off principals such that they're not necessarily ones with hands on the keyboard when it comes to creating the schedule, but there is a certain amount of technical expertise that that requires and can actually feed better schedules. So the fact that the district has that position and support for schools, I think is excellent. We saw that both schools, number two on the west tier, have a foundational set of content-specific interventions. At the middle school level, we know there's that academic enrichment period and there's some interventions that happen during that time as well as some outside of that, but these are content-specific courses essentially that happen in the student's schedule. Most of the time taught by a content-strung staff member, not all the time, as we'll talk one day just a little bit, but I think it's a really good foundation of some best practice intervention to work off of going forward. A third point is at the high school, we saw a really well-documented and clear process of the steps to create the schedule that's been laid out by staff in previous years. And certainly we encourage the school to continue that and I think the middle school has a similar process that they follow, which I wouldn't underestimate. There's plenty of districts that we work with that don't have anything documented, but it's not clear when is the timeline, certain steps need to happen when you get course requests and when those should be transitioned into a schedule. So in fact, I think it puts you above average on that end of things. And then finally, at the high school level, we saw a really robust and extensive list of advanced honor, dual-credit AP offerings for students as well as some really meaningful external partnerships in a way that I would say you kind of hit above your weight for schools of your size, especially at the high school, for the variety of offerings available to students. And that was something that folks were really proud of and really valued during our conversations. Wanted to make a point of highlighting as well. On the next slide, this gets into our initial list of opportunities for y'all. And so this is what we're going to be primarily assessing with the team next week to get a sense of thoughts, reactions, and where they want to focus going forward. I mentioned that y'all have a good foundation for interventions. I think there's opportunity to push that a little bit further. Right now, we see a couple different things as relates to that. One is at the middle school level, really push on that idea of content-specific intervention courses. I think you could just need 30-minute A/B or academic enrichment block for that purpose. Right now, some of those, most of those courses are running every other day, which typically is just not enough time for students to be exposed to either math or literacy to really build their skills and experience success. Best practice that we see from the schools that we see do that the best, it's a daily dose of extra time intervention for students at least 30 minutes. And so I think there is time in the schedule for that to happen, it's a matter of making a choice around creating some of those courses in a more specific way. Alternatively, and this is one B on the list, you can see, the middle school might say, you know what, this A/B period is not working as best as we want it to, may not be looking at the full yet expectations. We heard some language of it's kind of like a study hall for some students. There's for sure a structure to it where on Wednesdays, students are engaged, one active day, Tuesdays, Tuesday the next, and so on. And some students are receiving either special education services or some music programs. There's a lot of different things that are happening during that time, but not necessarily the level of really targeted intervention that I think folks originally intended for that time and would, I think, really amplify the use of that time if the district or school moved in that direction. And so as an alternative to that here, you could say, you know, we're going to repurpose those minutes to the rest of that period and extend those and we're going to build an intervention into the schedule. Students will take that in replacement of one of their non-core classes. At the high school level, what we were looking at there is to make sure that you really expand what you have. Right now, there's relatively low enrollment and very few sections of the intervention courses that exist. And I think there's reason, especially at the ninth and 10th grade, to build in some more of those courses taught by some of your strongest staff or content-strung staff. And I think one way to do that is to limit the use of study halls and learning centers. We saw the equivalent of about, I think, about seven FTE or full-time employees dedicated to staffing study halls. And there's a lot of mixed feelings we heard about study halls. Some folks said that it's really helpful and important for students to have that time. Others said, gosh, that's such a missed opportunity. We really should provide either better intervention and/or other opportunities for students and not put them in study halls, which I think a lot of the highest-performing high schools we've worked with have essentially brought the number of study halls for students down to zero. And so it's, I'd say, the number of study halls that you don't have at high school in particular is higher than we typically see. For point two here, this really relates to teacher planning time. We saw that teachers have, I would say ample time for planning and vibration within the schedules. Most of it at the middle school level is team-based. By that, I mean it's a math, science, BLA, and social studies teacher playing together instead of content-based, there's an English teacher's getting together. One thing that we're increasingly seeing at the middle school level is schools orienting their schedule around ensuring that content teams, or at least teachers that are teaching the same classes, have planning time together with that. I guess you could say the theory of action that tier-one instruction is the biggest lever that any school has to improve student outcomes. And so if you can set teachers up to use that time as best they can and provide the best lessons they can, that often comes more in a content planning time as opposed to the team planning time. For sure trade-offs can occur, but I think that's one thing through the middle school to consider. At high school level, we saw some teachers had planning time with their peers, teaching similar subjects or similar contexts, but it wasn't a priority, which the school made and identified. I think where the high school wants to move away from the PLC time, which we heard perspectives on both ends of the equation, they could potentially prioritize content planning time for your specific partner or specific teacher, maybe the content planning time built in. On the next slide, which is the last set of opportunities and then we'll pause and have to take questions. The next two really relate to the staffing side of things and making sure that y'all can staff in a way that is balancing variety of choice for students and efficiency of staff. And so first thing you'll get, and this is number three, is that for the high school in particular, I think there's reason to manage some of your low enrollment and single-section classes a bit differently. To be clear, I'm not saying that you need to offer less or reduce the number of offerings. What I'm saying is you need to, or I would suggest that y'all manage them differently by running courses every other semester or every other year, buying sections for really small classes that are similar. Because right now, what we're seeing is that you have a fairly high percentage of classes that are low enrollment. I think it was about between, right, 20 or 30% across some of the departments, which is about double what we typically see in capital high schools and many of the other single-section classes. And so I think the question here is, of those classes, which are the ones that you want to make sure you can offer students on a regular basis and staff up to do so? What are the ones that you don't want to take away but maybe offer less frequently such that you can staff a bit more cost-effectively? I think number four very much relates to that. There, this gets to the sexy data that we were looking at and we ran some numbers and see, all right, if you staff precisely to a class-sized target of 22 students, which is, as I understand it, two students lower than your maximum of 24 students, but about two or three students higher than your current class-size averages, what would that mean for your staffing? And you'd be looking at about, across the middle school and the high school, about 10 FTE that could potentially be used in other ways than you currently are. That's the mathematical, like mathematically efficient number on that. That's not necessarily a desirable or achievable number, but at least gives you a ballpark sense of where there could be some staffing capacity, should you be able to staff a bit more precisely to some of those class-size guidelines and run some smaller, or whether running some of those low enrollment sections. And then the last thing, which I might, I guess I would term as kind of the elephant in the room, is how you might want to go about aligning bell schedules going forward. We saw at the beginning, bell schedules are similar but different in some important ways. And so all of the first four opportunities around intervention and planning and staffing, I think that all can happen regardless of what you do with aligning bell schedules, but will very much be informed by some of the decisions you make about how do we want to align those blocks of time. And so a lot of what we'll spend our time on with the Guiding Coalition next Monday is engaging in a conversation around what should be some of those prioritized features or variables in the schedule with the understanding that we very much do not recommend imposing the middle school schedule on the high school or imposing the high school schedule on the middle school, but finding what are the things and the features in the schedule that are most important and then creating a schedule by aligning that that fits both of the schools. So let me stop there. I'd be happy to take questions, comments, or whatever else is on folks' minds based on that summary.
Thank you so much, David, for your presentation. We really appreciate it. First and foremost, I want to commend you for giving a presentation from the airport. As someone who travels, that is not an easy feat and the sound was actually quite good. So thank you.
Lucky you go and find a quiet spot here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know what airport you're at, but I think you got lucky. I just wanted to kind of backtrack a little bit in regard to this. So for right now, this is sort of a preliminary assessment in regard to future objectives here. I mean, what we're trying to do, and there's a lot of technical terms in here, so but I think what we're trying to do here, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is find a way to consolidate the middle school and high school, which we're fortunate to have on the same, combine them on a sort of unified schedule and an opportunity to maximize staff resources and give children more opportunities at different curriculum. Is that kind of rounded out?
Yes, yeah. And the way we thought about it is, let's first look at each schedule individually and assess some of the benefits and the challenges with them, such that you have some of those areas around intervention or planning or staffing that regardless of where you go to go or decide with the combined schedule, how you might be thinking about some of those components. And then, yes, the ultimate, the big question that we thought about was, if you want to consolidate and align these schedules, what are the biggest things to think about? And one might be some models to go about doing so. And so in our full report, we put together a couple, like it was two sample models. I would not term it either as perfect necessarily what y'all will go with, but more in the sense that we wanted to put something in front of folks to say, this is what it could like, could look like, so that's something to respond to there.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick question, and this might be one more for Sherry, or for Superintendent Burke and Assistant Superintendent Parsons, but you mentioned 20 to 30% classes with low enrollment. What do we define as low enrollment versus?
Great question. Yeah, I shouldn't have made that, apologies for not doing so. We use the cutoff of 15 students or fewer.
15?
With the idea of 15, one five, yep.
What, how many students do we decide not to run a class right now?
Usually in the eight.
Around eight?
It's a nine range.
Okay. So 20 to 30% of our classes at the high school, was this high school and middle school or just high school? Just high school?
Just high school.
Okay, have 15 or fewer students?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. If it's okay with you, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the board for additional questions. Anyone?
I was surprised to hear about how many staff are currently, you know, the equivalent of how many staff, right? Because people share their responsibility, but how many are dedicated toward study halls? But I know for my own kids that they enjoy and appreciate the time of a study hall. So I'm curious what other districts do who choose not to run them? How does their schedule work and what takes up that time and staffing?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. I think we've seen folks approach it a couple of different ways. Sometimes districts have said, you know, we have so many students taking study halls. What's a, it's an eight-period day, they cut back the period and they go to a seven-period day because there's, and through that, they actually don't have to reduce section of their classes for other students just because there's such a high volume of study halls or call them empty periods for students in this schedule. And I don't think you have that volume or that number of study halls for some of the schools that we've seen elsewhere. But it is a strategy to say, we have a period, let's go to seven and figure out how, you know, offer everything within that schedule. The other is to say, well, let's essentially add another course that students can take during that time. And we certainly have reviewed plenty of student schedules that don't have a study hall. And so there's precedent in the schedule for many, many students not to have that included into their schedule. And so that always opens up the discussion of then, wow, you know, when are students doing homework? How is that assigned? When do they get extra help? And that's typically, at least for the kind of intervention and support side of things, where we've seen schools scheduling content-specific courses for students. There's a course code and it's in their schedule, it's in the teacher's schedule. And now those will typically run for either a quarter or semester. So if a student's struggling in math or struggling in science, they can receive support in a really targeted way. And certainly, they could do some of the things that they would have done in any study hall otherwise within that context. But I think it's usually a mix of, you know, we want to change the academic experience for students, we want to give them more academic opportunities, enrichment opportunities or otherwise, which we're going to pull back on study halls, or we're going to beef up and it takes some of the staffing that we might have been able, that is the use that we're using within study halls to teach some more content-specific interventions. And I understand that in your district's particular context, it's not an apples-to-apples jump, so to say, with collective bargaining and how many planned periods and planned classes the teachers can teach. So I think there'd have to be some thought there around ways that the district could support with that and a way that teachers don't have a heavy planning brain but still provide some more targeted intervention. That's a discussion in itself, but I think that's where we're about seeing other high schools move.
I mean, study halls are typically a duty, not a teaching responsibility. So to add a sixth teaching responsibility would have actually huge FTE implications. So if we had eight teachers who didn't have study halls, we would have eight teachers who would be free for hallway duty, caf duty, other kinds of duties, but you can't just, you know, give them a sixth class.
Yeah, and I think that's a point very, very well on our mind as we were thinking about this. And I think it's a point worth discussing at the district. I'd offer up some of the ways that we've seen other schools creatively approach that is to say, either we're gonna budget and set aside some amount for teachers to teach a sixth class, because this intervention or these set of interventions are so important and valuable, we want to make the investment to do that, so we compensate teachers for the time. And others have said, you know what, we're gonna provide all the resources and the planning and everything for teachers, and they find a middle ground source with the union on, yes, you're gonna be teaching this intervention, but there's no expectation, or there's very limited expectations in terms of actual planning and screening and all that stuff that goes into it. I know that's a, that can be a rabbit hole to itself, but I'll put it out there, it's something we've seen happen in other districts.
Other districts that are the same size as Granby?
We generally don't take comments from the audience at this point, but I will ask you for your, are there, can you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Other districts that are the same size.
Other districts that are the same size as Granby was the?
Yep, yeah, we've seen it, like, small, medium, large districts or high schools playing of similar size.
I have some concerns about some of these classes that are fewer than 15 students, because I worry, I think one of the strengths of Granby is the fact that we have a variety of courses offered for students. And I fear that by having that threshold at 15, while I understand the cost implications, I fear losing some of the diversity of offerings.
So no decisions have been made. I want to be really clear. They needed some, they needed thresholds to assist in compiling the data, but we've not made any decisions the very first look. Jen, you could speak better.
So it's just like gathering of information and sharing from an outside perspective, because in district, we get attached, we get involved, we get engrossed in the work that we're doing. So it was really important to hear an outside perspective, who was able to meet with David, I would say, hundreds of staff recently?
Yeah, maybe not more than a hundred, but very close to 100.
Yeah. So met with all the different groups, gathered feedback, is putting together a report, and a few suggestions based on their experience across the board. So we're just getting this back. It was an ambitious timeline, and so now we're going to look at it with our guiding group, that is representative of middle school, high school, teacher, admin, across content areas. And then it's only the beginning of the conversation, really, but we wanted you to hear directly from David as to how we went about the work and sort of just the overarching opportunities that exist.
Okay, so then what are our next steps and what's the projected timeline moving forward for solutions?
So I think we're looking at this as a multi-year plan. What are the most pressing issues that we want to solve first? What can wait over time? And then how do we continue to weigh out things that are important for us? How do we consider, you know, always offering AP French, which may run at 10, but then doing it every other year for things that could be in junior or senior year? So we need to look at how to preserve what's really important, work within our parameters as a district, and figure out what do we want to do first, what and when? And then what do we want to consider for future decisions? And then some of this is just almost like a list of good considerations moving forward. One of the challenges we have in a smaller place is scheduling year over year can fluctuate hugely depending on, you know, when one of our graduating classes goes from 1:15 to 1:45, that has a pretty big impact on running two additional sections of every class. So what we want to be able to do is come up with almost more like formulas and sort of guides as to how we can staff every year without, like, reinventing, and how can we project out? Because we're budgeting now, we schedule in the winter, right? So that was a roundabout answer to your question. Timeline-wise, I think there's things that we can do relatively quickly and easily, and then there's things that may take more time. So I think this study will impact our work for probably the next three to five years.
Wow, okay.
And based upon what I heard in looking through the report, am I correct that you're not looking to completely align both schedules, but maybe blocks of the schedules if we're able to accomplish this goal? Is it something?
I think one of the opportunities is to completely align, because then we can have staff move from building to building, we can have students move from building to building. Right now, we have some advanced math students who go over to the high school. That impacts three blocks, three periods of their day. Because three periods in the high school schedule is equivalent to one in the middle school, or three in the middle school could impact one at the high school. So we're not able to efficiently take advantage of those opportunities unless it's completely aligned. We could look at a partial alignment. That's an option.
Yeah, I think a big question that, for the district, and I'm sure we'll discuss with the guiding coalition next week, is align the schedule, what should be the driving set of factors when it comes to alignment, central alignment of the schedules? Is it to share staff? If so, which staff? Is it to share, allow students, middle school students to take high school classes? If so, what types of classes? Is it for high school students to be able to tutor and go to middle school and support middle school students? If so, in what kind of way? And I think we've seen schools prioritize any set of those, but I think so long as you all are clear on, we're aligning the schedules because we're going to gain X, Y, and Z, and it will allow us to use staff a bit more cost-effectively or allow these other different opportunities, just needs that weren't there before. That's always gonna, I think, set you up better to get investment in mind from teachers, staff, students, because they see the clear rationale for the alignment as opposed to we're gonna align because we want to align.
Yeah, right. That makes sense.
So we'll come back to the board.
Okay, so poor Sherry who's suffering with bronchitis, she said she will be coming back to the board again with additional information.
David may not, but our guiding coalition will meet next week. We'll be hearing a more in-depth report than what we shared this evening, and then Jen and I will provide updates to the board as we move forward. Our timeline was such that we wanted to understand the possibilities prior to our plus-one budget, so that if there were any impact or things that we could better realize for children, we had these facts to assist us. Our goal ultimately is to provide robust opportunities for children and to find very specific components of our schedule for intervention. We know that this is a need at the secondary level. Our goal is not to have stringent class size or formulas that we always stick to. We understand that there will be some flexibility there, given different student needs from year to year, but we need a broader understanding and picture so that we can be more forward-thinking in our planning for scheduling across a child's four-year experience at the high school as an example.
Ali, I see you unmuted. Do you, I was just gonna ask you too, if you had any questions or comments.
I did. I appreciate, you folks kind of already organically asked the things that I was gonna ask. The one thing that I had was going back to, we quantify low enrollment as 15. What are we qualifying, or quantifying the quote-unquote oversize?
Yeah, so, that's for the, I think there was a sub-opportunity about running some, like, larger oversize, but yeah. I'd say the definition of that was not as specific. I think there, the intent is to say, as you think about your program of studies and your classes going forward, you might consider running so much larger classes than you would otherwise, or than you have traditionally in select circumstances. And so an obvious, classic example of that is PE. Most PE classes are something along the lines of 30 or 40, in some schools, you know, 50 students, way larger than you typically run, say, a science class or an art class. And so I think the point there is to encourage the school to think about, are there specific courses that actually, it would make sense to run a larger class than we have, because we want to offer up the opportunity to more students, and in a way that would allow us to run one section instead of, let's call it, two sections, and therefore allow that teacher who's teaching it to teach an additional section of something else. And so that's, it's a more of a pinpoint precision type of strategy as you think about the courses. It's definitely not something that you want to apply in a broad strokes, but rather for specific courses with specific teachers, where you think, this is a good way for us to maintain the opportunity for students to do it maybe a bit more cost-effectively, but in a way that still sets up the teacher and student for success.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. And speaking of courses, that segues into, what are we calling core and non-core subjects that we're hearing for this, this is on board A?
Yeah, yeah. I'm personally not a fan of those terms, but we just haven't found anything better to categorize things. Core math, science, E O I, and social studies. Non-core, essentially everything else, and I don't mean that in a bad or derogatory way, but core language, music, art, visual arts, performing arts, et cetera, with the idea that schools, kind of by definition, will say, well, if there are these core classes, requirements, graduation requirements associated with those, then they're treated differently, for better, for worse. And so we tend to segment classes into core and non-core in that way, especially at the middle school level.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was aligning with my thoughts. Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone have any additional questions?
Just a comment that I think study halls are really important. You know, a lot of our kids are busy every night, volleyball team's out tonight till 10 o'clock, right? And those study halls provide them the opportunity to take more honors, AP, get interventions, all of that stuff. I just think it's important to keep them in the.
I agree with you on that, and time to meet with teachers to make up work or to get extra help.
Thank you. Thank you so much, David. We really appreciate it. I'm trying to save Superintendent Burke from speaking, so we appreciate your hard work on this. The logistics are a little mind-boggling, so the information is greatly appreciated.
Excellent, excellent. Well, again, thanks for the opportunity. Very much looking forward to being with the guiding coalition and continuing the conversation next week.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bye-bye.
Have a safe flight.
You too.
Thank you.
Moving on to secondary school reports, I believe we have Principal Tanis and Principal Dunn joining us today.
Heather's up first.
Principal Tanis, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me have this opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm excited and it's a privilege to talk about all the wonderful things that are happening at Granby Memorial Middle School. And I'm going to start with some notable successes. So I just want to highlight some things that are happening, and you'll see that these achievements span across academics, music, extracurriculars, showcasing kind of the well-rounded development of our students. So our academics have shown growth. Our music program continues to flourish with record-breaking numbers attending our festivals. Much larger district schools don't have the number of students we have attending these music festivals. And then I want to highlight one of our key components this year, which is creating that culture of crew. So you'll hear me talk a little bit about this tonight in some of my slides, but crew has been an impactful addition to our school building and building a positive school culture, fostering community, supporting both academic and social growth for our students. And I'm sure you're sitting there saying, so what is crew and why is it called crew? So I'm just gonna read a little blurb that was shared with our students and our staff right when we started school this year. "So, on a boat, passengers are catered to. Their main purpose is to arrive at the destination with as little as effort as possible. They are involved in activities, but not wholly engaged in the journey. Crew, on the other hand, are responsible for the entire journey. They are engrossed in the activities of the ship. In fact, without their individual and collaborative effort, the passage cannot happen. Crew reach the same destination as their passengers, but their experience is significantly richer." So I think our students' experience is significantly richer this year because they are a part of crew, which is a nice segue into our connection. So one of the key ways we're fostering this connection is building that culture of crew within our school community, and we have weekly crew meetings. And to start the school year this year, we started each day for the first week in this crew class, which is a really nice way to start, because there's no more than 11 students in the class. It's really intentional to start the year this way with those small, focused groups, really allowing students to have a safe and supportive environment where they can feel seen and heard. So what's unique about this as well is that every single certified staff within our building has a crew class. So they are leading activities, building strong relationships with students, and it's really helped structure that sense of belonging for our students. If you look at that graphic up to the right, 85% of students at our middle school replied agree or strongly agree to, I feel like I am an important part of my school community. 83 replied, agree to, I have at least one adult I can trust and talk to at G M M S. So this was given at the end of September, just some feedback, and these numbers really reflect that positive impact that crew is having overall in our school community. Beyond crew, we've also made some strong efforts to build connections within the community and school life, so our students are not only forming those meaningful relationships with their peers and their teachers, we're really focused on increasing our communication and partnering with families. So we had kicked off the year with a back-to-school picnic. We hope it grows a little bit next year, but we had a nice turnout. We also had a wonderful trivia night that made a comeback from last year, so that was a really nice family event. And also, there's some quarterly parent meetings that are continuing to happen. We rolled out a back-to-school, just talking to parents about what is happening at the middle school. And on November 15th, Megan Reiner, our Director of School Counseling, and our school counselors will be hosting just what is the role of a middle school counselor? So that's happening on the 15th. So moving on to focus on the theme of believe, it's a core value at G M M S. We're really committed to fostering that growth mindset and encouraging students to believe in their abilities and risk-taking. So this belief is not just about students' academic success, but about believing in themselves as individuals capable of growth and positive change. So professional growth is part of that, so we're committed to ensuring staff are continuously developing their skills and practices. And one example of this work is really establishing that common grading practice and aligning our assessments, which is providing consistency and clarity for both students and teachers. Additionally, we're gonna be adding some instructional rounds to our practice at the middle school, just within the middle school, fostering collaboration among staff and refining some instructional strategies. So we're excited for those to come. We've also been able to hold frequent and focused leadership team meetings. We have a different structure this year with some team leaders, as well as our content area specialists. And really, these efforts are making sure that we're not only empowering our students for growth, but our staff as well, and improving each and every day. When we talk about students believing, very excited for student-led conferences next week. So this is a new practice that we're bringing into the middle school to refine how everybody's getting information about how their student is doing. So during conferences, students will discuss their successes, identify areas of growth, share goals. The process is really to strengthen their own self-awareness and ownership of their learning and build some strong connections with families. I remember when my children were in middle school, you know, what did you do today in school? What are you learning? Nothing. What'd you do today? Nothing. So we're really hoping that this gives an opportunity to share some concrete examples with families as what they are really doing. So giving students voice, we're really believing that they're ready to take charge of their own learning. That's a quick sneak peek of one of the slides. If you are a parent of a middle schooler, that students have been working on during their classes and in crew, you'll be, parents will be meeting with their child and their crew teacher to go over all of this information. of this information. All right, it was working. There we go. Now, if we turn our attention to achieve, we're dedicated to helping our students reach their fullest potential academically and emotionally. So this goes just beyond grades. And it's about setting and reaching personal goals, overcoming challenges, and celebrating progress in every area of school success. So we focused on building and refining our instructional practices. Like I said, developing those common assessments and success criteria across subject areas, really focusing on giving students feedback and having those purposeful data conversations with students to really help students reflect on their own progress and then make informed decisions about their next steps. So this is happening within classrooms pretty regularly. I know we talked a little bit last year about I X L. That is something that's continuing this year, and our students are talking about that in their academic enrichment class with their A E teacher, but then really bringing that over into math, too, and how are we setting those goals and moving forward. So as we continue to make strides in our growth, there's just a few challenges and considerations overall that I'd like to highlight tonight. So really, we're focused on continuing to build and grow our crew practice, ensuring that students not only have a strong impact within our school community, but how can we bring that outside and have students involved in the community. It's vital as we strive to deepen connections both within G M M S and outside. Another important area is modernizing our instructional spaces. The building was built in 1992, and I'm not sure that there have been too many changes since that time, but our goal is really to create environments where, that are more conducive to learning, providing students and teachers with the resources they need to be successful. And then one other highlight on here on this slide would be the need for a reading interventionist, a certified reading interventionist. We're addressing some literacy challenges with our students. While our Smarter Balance scores have stayed okay, they're flat. And we'd really like to make sure that we are reaching students where we are and making sure that they are growing in their progress as well. So looking ahead, we've had several exciting and impactful long-term plans. So really focusing on our M T S S process, multi-tiered systems of support and interventions. This is going to allow us to better meet the needs of all students through those targeted interventions and supports. That's with our math interventionist, our reading interventionist, but also our teachers within the classroom. And we're working on embedding restorative practices into our classroom spaces by making sure we're using those approaches and aiming to create a more positive and supportive environment where students are taking responsibility for their actions. Lastly, committed to incorporating student voice. This will include giving students a platform to share their thoughts, which they've started to do so nicely this year, on their learning experience, the direction of the school. We're excited to have them leading school-wide assemblies and, again, bringing that out into the community. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Principal Tanis. I wanted to back up to the considerations page, the modernizing building instructional spaces. Yeah, I know, I know.
Come in there.
Yeah, we always refer to our middle school as the new, we recall the new school. It's not, it's not so new anymore. What I'm wondering is, what kind of spaces do you think would help facilitate better learning, considering the decades that have gone by? What are you thinking about?
Oh, well, how long do we? I can give a perfect example, and I wish I had a better picture of this. I think it's on one of our slides. But if you walk into our Family Consumer Science classroom, I think that screams at you like 1992. You know, it's outdated. There's separate spaces. It's not conducive to students really working together in those groups. And I think when you look in our classroom spaces, that's an intervention classroom. So we do see some small desks and group work there. But really, modernizing that space and making sure that our students are able to access what they need. So some of it is a facelift, but some of it is really looking at even the design of the classroom, the furniture.
And what about things like technology?
For some spaces, we're in a really good place. Like our technology education classroom really could use, we could do a lot in that space as far as, I mean, I love the wood shop right now, and we have some really scary, I think, but interesting tools that our students are using. But there is room for some really, you know, the robotics piece. Our kids are very excited about that. I know we're having students come up to the high school for some of that. We have an opportunity in our building to start those pieces if we had some of that.
Other question about the crew program?
Mm-hmm.
Can I just cut somebody?
No, no, I was saying other questions.
Okay. So the crew program, the students, how is it decided who their crew teacher is? And is this a program where students are with the same adult for three years?
Great question. So this year, it was random. You know, we were trying something new. Nine students. How are they going to connect with a teacher, whether or not they have that teacher as a classroom teacher or not? And we've seen some really cool things happening with kids connecting with teachers. They may never have an opportunity to do so. So we are thinking about whether or not kids stay together and look with their crew, or if we're going to, you know, start from scratch again next year. Not quite sure yet. There's excellent opportunities with both models.
And did you say that the crew teacher was going to be sitting in a parent-teacher conference?
So that's who is, well, the student is facilitating the conference, but it's going to be with their crew teacher.
The reading interventionist, that's something you don't currently have, but you're looking for in the next budget cycle. Is that what that reference was?
Yes. So right now, we have a wonderful tutor who works with small groups of students, but we are really looking, as we did last year with the math interventionist, to switch that position to a certified role, where they can take a more targeted look at what kids are doing, the data, and then designing instruction to meet where they are.
Since we're on this page, real quick, I'm going to ask one more quick question.
Yeah.
The, in regard to the 85% and the 83%, are we able to identify the 15 and the 17 who might need additional outreach or make sure that they're?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Principal Dunn, you're up.
Hey. Evening, everyone. And thank you as well for the opportunity to update you on our work at the high school through a report. First of all, I'm just getting some information, which I think is very important and timely to share, is that our volleyball team just won.
Yay!
They won their first round, and they're going to play on Friday night and the second night. We've got a lot of activity at the high school. Certainly proud of that. They are featured right there at the top. So that's where you can see Katie in her seat, because she's not even in that picture, but she is in that picture because she just won that game. So, so thanks again for the opportunity. We're proud of many of our accomplishments to start with, our Granby Bears. First of all, last year, we received the recognition that we were, we received our highest ranking ever in the U.S. News and World Report, which is 20th in Connecticut and 7th in Greater Hartford. Just to give you some perspective on that, that second bullet, it's a big piece of that. So that's already come up a little bit, is that one of our areas of strength is the amount of opportunities that we have for our students to take college-level classes. I know that was shared previously at the board. But in regards to A P, E C classes, and our partnership classes with S N U T C, 94% of the graduating class last year was able to take at least one of those college courses. We also had a lot of successes with some of our assessments in regards to the highest percentage ever of our current Class of 25 scoring at Benchmark in their cohort on any assessment, in last year's S A T in evidence-based reading and writing. And as well, the highest percentage ever of our students, I believe this is accurate, I have to go back a long way, but certainly for a long time in regards to the number of students who achieved a 3 or higher on their A P exams. So as is depicted there, we have wonderful successes in our athletics and our extracurricular programming, all-conference, all-state last year with a couple of all-New England athletes as well. And as Sophia mentioned, we're off to a great start in our tournament season this, this fall as well. So another piece there that we're celebrating, that I'm certainly celebrating, is our wonderful new leadership team who are pictured here and a couple of whom are here with me as well tonight. So first of all, on the right, to the right of me at the bottom of that picture, which was at yesterday's soccer game, that is Athletic Director Carl Gates, former Kearns P E teacher, who is now our Athletic Director, off to a great start. And then we are joined as well by Dr. Hannah Thill, our new Assistant Principal, and Mr. Corey Rowenko, our new students who are right back there as well. So we have a great opportunity with wonderful new influx of passion and energy and ideas. Also, we have a brand-new Director of School Counseling, Megan Reiner, who we shared with the middle school, and a couple of really important department chairs, new personnel in science with Ryan Hunt, and especially with Tracy Smith, and a couple of other great hires as well. So lots to celebrate there. So as to connecting, there's a lot of things that I want to highlight. The first thing is that we've taken a really good step, and we're going to continue that journey in regards to our practices around restorative practices in the classroom. Upper right is one of the sessions that some of our staff led this past August during our P D. We have some of our support staff who are also part of the district team that's planning the rollout for all staff. Now, we've had a number of staff actually up to 10 right now who've been able to participate in a two-day training around restorative practices. As well, we just had a session yesterday with Justine Ginsburg from Farmington Valley Health District on youth mental health first aid. We continue to enjoy our partnerships with our local partners in career and technology, our Practical Arts Department, with different events, for instance, their advisory breakfasts and a career fair that we've been able to run the last couple of years, which we're looking forward to doing again. As I mentioned, and a shout-out as well to Dean Rowenko and Athletic Director Gates for their work on coordinating student activities and really providing that opportunity for our students to stay connected. There are so many wonderful ways in which our students demonstrate their, our core value of involvement through the various clubs, activities, through engaging with their student voice. And then programmatically, here's a picture of our French exchange students who just were here a little bit ago, enjoying a good old American Halloween tradition. And so, you know, shout-out to our world language department for those connections as well. So in regards to supporting our belief in our students and our staff, another piece of that is that we are engaging our students with opportunities through our advisory program as well. We're working on a reboot of that, and Dean Rowenko has taken the lead on that as well with some other colleagues to really start to embed some of those basic restorative practices and conversations and things like that. That picture on the bottom is actually from this morning's advisory. Those are some of our students who were writing cards of appreciation for our veterans, our local veterans. We are at Granby Memorial High School. We are very excited to celebrate our veterans this Friday at our football game and as well through a special ceremony on Veterans Day next week. So that was another opportunity for our students to, to engage. And then through college and career planning, again, Megan Reiner, our new Director of School Counseling, through her work with our school counseling department. I know there was a presentation recently about some of those pieces, but that's another huge way in which we're trying to develop student horizons under the goal of believing. We have our new spaces and coffee cart with our student transition program for, in our Special Education Department. And then a little highlight of our teacher evaluation revision or revised teacher evaluation plan this year is really around teacher efficacy. So the goal-setting process is, includes, how do we try to engage teachers in developing goals that are around practices that they can engage in that have an impact and really improving their sense of, you know, that what they, what they do matters and what they do, their own belief in, in their own actions makes a difference for kids. And as well, again, great opportunities with new leadership people and new leadership teams, new leadership structures as we continue to refine and make our work more efficient for our students. And then in regards to achieving, we continue some of the work that we began last year with a lot of refinement this year around especially department goals and benchmarks that are aligned with P S A T standards and skills. Last year, we started the process of developing benchmark assessments in several departments. This year, we had actually math, English, and social studies all administer two different benchmarks even prior to the recent P S A T, which just happened a few weeks ago. So the idea there is exposing kids to practice, exposing kids to feedback around some of those skills and standards that they'll be facing, including with the way that the assessments are structured. We're also making a big push, let me say a couple of times tonight, around our vision in the graduate. So some departments are aligning right to some of those indicators. Here, pictured, you see that we have our instructional coach, that's Dawn Nelson up in the right, working with our science teachers. So one of our goals this year is to continue to develop our capacity of our teachers around using our platforms, D N A, and our eduplacer platforms to both create and then house and analyze student performance data and student benchmark data, and then engage students in goal-setting around those areas. So that's a big, a big piece of the work around our achievement goal. A huge shout-out as well to Dr. Thill, who's in the back there, for all her work with what is already emerging as a pretty significant revision of our multi-tiered systems of support. We just had a leadership meeting today where she was sharing some different pieces of that, that's much more efficient in the way that we're engaging teachers and P L C teams in looking at needs and referring when, when there are concerns, and as well, working with our M T S S team and our leadership team. And then, as well, our department chairs and coaches strengthening instructional practices. Bottom left, you see some of the vertical work. I know that we've had presentations here at the board around that vertical work. The idea there is low, low-stress practice with immediate feedback, collaboration, and then that idea of just practice, practice, practice. And that's really across all departments with their goal-setting, and as well, really focusing on the thinking. It's not just about, you know, okay, I can answer a P S A T question. It's about that thinking that goes into that, engaging students in persevering sometimes through difficult challenges. So considerations and challenges, first of all, I wanted to put up in the upper right there, I know you can't read it, but that is an example right there of a new form that we're using for our M T S S with a lot of links and a lot of different things that connect to different resources for teachers that they can use. But certainly, as I've mentioned before, it's very challenging times to be a own person these days. And as was evident as well through our youth mental health first aid training that we had yesterday. So certainly, mental health challenges that are impacted by increasing anxiety, that are impacted by these devices and social media, and as well, through some of the cultural shifts and changes that are going on in regards to access and messaging around substances and things like that. So there's certainly an environment of challenge for our students, and we're, you know, we have a great team of supportive staff to work with them, but that's certainly a consideration going forward. So that really brings us to, as well, just ongoing, need to be more precise and to really target interventions in math, in reading, in mental health, and continue to make sure that those supports are in place. And again, the big pieces, we're trying to align every bit of what we do, and I'll mention this in the next slide, curriculum, instruction, assessment, intervention, programs, practices, to that vision in the graduate as we prepare for something else shared in a minute. As well, another challenge is just the ongoing evolution of technology. shared in a minute. As well, another challenge is just the ongoing evolution of technology. So whether it's cell phones or AI, you know, we're all in it. And so those are things that we are continuing to try to address. So long-term plan, as I mentioned, further development of interventions and programming. Some of that programming is also around pathways and supports for college and career. What we'd like to continue to evolve in doing is really drawing through lines for students who might have specific interest in certain fields. I think we do a really good job with exposing students to college-level classes, but as well, there's a lot to celebrate around our career in technology education and really kind of, you know, thinking about that as being a guiding force for us as we go. We do have, even though we went through a recent renovation, we have a wonderful new cafeteria, a new culinary classroom, which is now being used, which is very exciting. We still have some needs in regards to athletic facilities. So as some might know, for instance, our track with some needs for some improvements there that we've discussed as well with Mr. Stevenson and Mr. DeGray. And then, as was, you know, kind of linking back to what Mr. James reported before, opportunities around schedule, how do we continue to maximize opportunities within that for students, balancing some of the things we talked about. And then, even though it seems like a long way away, four years, we are asking money for money for our plus one, this for next cycle, to support some of the preparation for NEAS. It takes a long time. We need people who are going to co-chair that process, and we need to get some of that work really begun, send people on visits and things like that, and begin to schedule in the process for that NEAS accreditation, which is one of the reasons we have a new cafeteria is because of that process last time.
Could you clarify what that is?
Oh, sure. That is a New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's our decennial accreditation process. So the last time that happened was in 2018. And part of the, one of the outcomes of that was a lot of momentum around the need for facilities upgrades in regards to some of the technology spaces and specifically our kitchen and cafeteria. So that all kind of grew out of that process. The standards have changed. We were under a different set of standards during that accreditation. Now there are standards that were made, I believe, in 2020. So they'll also be a little dated by 2028, but they're going to, that's going to, it's really all based on our vision of the graduate. So happy to take any questions?
Only because I, you know, my kids are younger, so I'm not quite there yet. There was, in regard to the achieve, can you just explain to me DNA and EduClima?
Sure. DNA, or gen something. So those are both, so those are our two, I will, I'll pass it along in a second. Those are our two data systems that we're using. DNA is really a tool that teachers can use to develop benchmark assessments and then track that data. I actually was thinking about two different pictures, what the other one was, where a department leader was actually sharing some of the data that had come out of a benchmark assessment with her team, that happened to be math, and you can see graphs and different ways in which some of that data, achievement data can, is really user-friendly for teachers at the benchmark level. EduClima is where we're housing all of our kind of bigger macro data, where we can really look longitudinally at where our students have been. We can track students in regards to where they've been in terms of S-Back, and then, you know, now we have several administrations of PSAT, and we could use that as well to set goals for students and to look at intervention needs and things like that. But those really work together. How's that check?
Really good.
Yeah?
Excellent. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I'm curious, you know, you mentioned evolving mental health challenges and the need for more targeted interventions for mental health. I guess I'm wondering if you feel like you have the staffing that you need to address the level of need that is going on with kids today.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think a couple of ways that I would answer that is I do feel very confident in the strength of our staff at the moment. We think about that all the time. We think about what our needs are. And in regards to our students having access to people that they, if they need to, both from like what we call, I guess, for lack of a better term, a tier-two and a tier-three kind of need, we certainly have people in very important roles for students as well. I think one of the other things I'd say is, as we move in the direction of restorative practices, as we think about how to build in cultures that are, you know, whether that's reflected in advisory or, as Principal Tannis said, through crew, we're developing those kind of different connections as well with students, so with individual students. So in regards to this being kind of all hands on deck to address needs, it kind of came up yesterday, actually, when we had that training, because everyone's being trained around some of the signs of what might be happening with students if they're struggling. And so it's really important that, of course, teachers can do what they can, but we also are a small school, and you don't recall if you need some support. So we're always, you know, calibrating around that and taking the temperature on that to make sure that we're adequately staffed.
Principal Tannis mentioned the possible need there for a reading interventionist. Do you think anything like that is going to be necessary for the high school, or are you anticipating that reading, math?
We're having conversations, and some of that has to do with, we do have some interventions in place that are sometimes being offered. We might have the opportunity, say, for an English teacher, to run a particular intervention. But as much as they're trained in the, and very familiar with the English standards, they might not have the training, for instance, in the five areas of reading and things like that, and really know how to help kids decode. So we do have a small population of students who have some of those needs as well. So as we think kind of globally and at a district level around that, we do have needs. They might be in situations where students may or may not have an IAP in reading. They might just be, you know, at a certain level of challenge on that, and we want to make sure we can meet that. So we're still in conversations around that.
Thank you. Anybody here have anything else? Alli, do you have anything? I can't see you, so I don't know if you're on the other end or not.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving right along to reports and discussion, we are talking about the first reading of draft policy 3160, budget expense reports, and line item transfers.
Nikki, can I ask?
Nikki, can you speak for me just a two-second, high-level, why this policy is in front of the board?
Sure. So this policy that's in front of you essentially takes two current board policies and combines them into one, and it will allow us, moving forward with our budget reports to the board, to go quarterly, as well as do line transfers throughout the course of the year, rather than waiting until year-end to do them all at once. So essentially, it's taking all those and putting it into one policy.
Thank you.
And we did discuss this during the curriculum meeting today. I just want to add a little additional color in regard to this, the monthly reporting, the quarterly reporting. As we discussed in the curriculum meeting, our Board of Finance is requesting that we continue our monthly reporting, which we are happy to do for them. But the Board of Education is going to rely more on the quarterly reporting in effort to give our finance subcommittee more time to evaluate additional contracts and other opportunities to explore for cost savings. So I just wanted to throw that additional out there.
And this is something that we have discussed in the Finance Committee as well.
Yes.
Thank you. It's just a first reading, no action.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Business requiring action. Do I have a motion in regard to the minutes for the last meeting?
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 16, 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'm abstaining, because I was not present at that meeting. Alli, were you an aye?
Thank you.
Okay. The motion carries. Next up, we have the ratification of the Granby Association of School Administrators Contract. There is a memo in the packet in regard to the settlement, the negotiations and the resolution of this. We had Donna Nolan, Heather Lombardo, and myself negotiate the next three-year contract for the Association of School Administrators for the period July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028. The negotiation process went very well. It was favorable for all, really a great opportunity for us to go through our contract. We did a lot of general cleanup in regard to some policy language, things like contract language, things like that. We had a general wage increase, 1.7%, 1.75% in the first year, 2.25% in the second year, and 2.25% in the third year of the agreement. The total increase over three years is 11.53%. And then we revised some of the leveling, and we're to make it clear, just needed a little bit more clarity there. Employee premium for health benefits, sharing contributions to health insurance options for each year will be 21.25%, and then going up to, yeah, 21.25% for 2526, 21.5 for 2627, 21.5 for 2728. We did have some additional language changes. There was a change in the language pertaining to retired administrators hired prior to July 1, 2025, that they may continue to participate in the Granby Employee Medical Dental and Vision Insurance Plans at no cost of the BOE. But it's all, it's for those hired prior to July 1, 2025, and then it ceases. And then there were additional language changes around the way professional funds are disseminated, as well as language adding, language added limiting course reimbursement to $8,000 a year per member of Gaza.
Monica, if I might add, if someone was following the percentage increases that you gave, they did not add up to the 11.53%. So I think we should add just a little explanation of while it's seemingly, the total is less than 11.53%, the reason why the overall impact is 11.53% is because there were some changes in some of the steps and placement of people on the steps and the chart, and that's why it amounted to that amount.
That's correct. Yeah, I skipped that provision there. Thank you, Donna, because that does, that can be very confusing without reading that other section. So the levels were revised to include a Dina students, and all other levels were moved up, or all others were moved up a level. And then the Director of Pupil Services was moved from level three to level five as well. So that's why the percentages don't add up. Thank you. Does anybody have any additional questions or concerns in regard to this?
I'm, just for clarity, the total increase over three years is the 11.53%. So that, that total increase is 146.
That's correct.
Over the life of the three-year contract.
That's right. Yep. Any additional questions? All right, could I have a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education ratify the Granby Association of School Administrators Contract effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alli?
Aye.
Thank you, Alli. All right, the motion, or the motion passes. Committee reports. Board standing committee reports, curriculum, policy, technology, communication met tonight.
Okay. Yep, I'll try to be brief since the hour is late. We had a visit from Kate Gallett, who teaches French at Granby Memorial High School, and she was proposing that we approve a new textbook, Reporter's Francophone, which would be used both at the middle school and high school. This textbook series allows for alignment of courses taught at different levels by different staff members. It aligns also with the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language Standards and the World Readiness Standards. Appears it prepped students quite well for the actful assessment of performance towards proficiency in language, which is the test that allows our students to qualify for the SEAL by literacy. So we, they will be piloting that starting next year in French II, and we are looking forward to hearing how that goes. But for now, we did approve that we adopt that textbook. Yes, okay. The next thing we heard from our Department Chair of English from the high school, that's Carolyn Weiser, and she was accompanied by Michelle Tarniff, who I believe is the secondary ELA coach. And they were telling us about the, some revisions to the grades nine and 10 English Language Arts Curriculum. They began by sharing, actually, Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Parsons explained a bit of the history, and then Carolyn Weiser shared with us how she went about reviewing the curriculum with her team, explained to us the one-dimensional, two-dimensional, and three-dimensional curriculum maps, which was something new for me. And it was a very thorough presentation. And so there are a few changes. The English, which is previously the pre-AP English, the proposal is for it to become English IX, a non-leveled course, and also some changes to the Capstone courses that are offered. One of them is an AP Capstone Seminar, which is a one-year course. There's also an offering of a Capstone course, which is a half-year. That is going to become a half-credit humanities elective course. And the AP Capstone Seminar course will be offered to 10th graders who are also enrolled in their 10th grade, either academic or history/English class. It could also be an offering for 11th and 12th graders. And that, let me think, that's not the one, that's the CCSU, no.
Journalism.
That was journalism, right, journalism, thank you. And so that was quite interesting to learn about the difference with the Capstone Experience versus Capstone Course. And then we learned also about some of the two English electives that are offerings, that are half-year courses that are offered for, I believe, just seniors. Is that correct?
They're open to juniors also, but they're mostly taken by seniors.
Mostly, yeah. And that's journalism, which is going to become a course that is a dual enrollment course with a CCSU, and students will be able to earn three college credits for, if they earn, I believe it's a C or better in the course. And then the option of an independent study for a half-year course of Capstone as well. And that will accommodate the schedules of students who may be enrolled in other half-year courses or have a very full schedule, or, or I should say, and/or, students who attend as NUNTAC or the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts. Let's see, we tabled those motions for now until our next curriculum subcommittee meeting on December 3. I think that is about it. Very informative.
Thank you so much, Karen. And the Finance Personnel Facility did not meet and will meet in two weeks from, the attachment here for the approved Finance Minutes from June 18, 2024, we're not sure if there's supposed to be one from September that should be attached here, or October. Okay, we'll just tape, we're going to table that to the next meeting, and then we'll attach them to the next packet. So my apologies for that. We will get that taken care of. Other board-related reports, oh, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions for Karen in regard to the multiple things that were discussed in the curriculum committee tonight? I'm so sorry, I got distracted.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Crack Cave, I don't think we have any updates there. And then Granby Education Foundation?
Yeah, I went to the meeting on October, I don't know, after the last meeting. They're planning, they're starting their planning for the Granby. So they reviewed some donations in memory of Cal Hemingway, and they are continuing to work on recruitment. So the JBF really wants some new members. They want some new folks on the board. We were sort of problem-solving the general, I think there can be a decline in volunteerism. So trying to find new ways of connecting with folks, and it is such a lovely organization.
It is.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Attached in the back is a calendar of events. I would recommend that everybody also just keep updated on the website for all the various athletic events that keep on getting added and changed. all the various athletic events that keep on getting added and changed during this particular time. There's a PTO meeting tomorrow for anyone that's interested at the Wells Road Media Center, early release coming up next week. But I wanted to highlight again, the, the Twisted Tales of Poe play. I'm using this as an opportunity to start reading Edgar Allan Poe to my children, just because I wanted to make bedtime harder. So, but I, I really am very excited to see the particular performance. And I do want to wish everyone a very happy Veterans Day, and especially to those who have served. All right, so I won't go through everything on there, obviously. And then next up, do we have any board member announcements? Anyone? Action items.
Is it an action item that we have to revisit the minutes of the?
It is, not action, but we will act on that next time. Thank you. And then superintendent's report to the best that you were able to?
Thank you, no, I'll be brief, but I did just want to take the opportunity to highlight the Granby Children's Book Festival that was held this past weekend. It's a really unique celebration of children's literature, and it's a joint effort between the town of Granby, the Granby Public School Libraries, and the town libraries. And so I just want to thank everyone who committed their time and expertise. We had many fabulous, award-winning authors there. I had the opportunity to spend time there with my nieces and nephews, so this year I had an experience with young children, and it was really just wonderful. So award-winning last year, and I'm sure that the future is bright for this particular festival. So my heartfelt gratitude for everyone that was involved. I all just, I also do just want to mention that as we gather here this evening, our Teacher of the Year, Kristin Laflamme, is being recognized at the Bushnell. Pauline Greer, her school principal, is escorting her to that special ceremony in my absence due to our board meeting also being this evening. But we will continue to congratulate Kristin all year long. And then lastly, because I won't possibly get through the list I have in front of me, I want to welcome and ask him to just say a wave, Mr. Christopher DeGray joined us on October 21st as our Director of Facilities, hit the ground running and spending lots of time out in our buildings, and we just welcome Chris, we're very happy to have you, and I wanted to introduce you to the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Berg, and, and thank you so much, Dr. Dill and, and Mr. DeGray for being here. You're welcome, we're, we're very, we're very lucky to have you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Everybody's sweating up here. Any discussion on that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Our motion is, or heeding is adjourned. People on TV don't realize.